Good evening. I will call the August Council meeting to order here. All older persons are present and one vacancy, as you'll see on the speaking order on the screen this evening. So, thank you all for being here and good evening to those joining us here in person or observing from home. Item number three on our agenda this evening is a pledge of allegiance followed by a silent prayer and move and vacation. I invite you to please stand.
Pledge allegiance. To give the life of the United States of America and to do a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in law.
Amen. Item four on our agenda this evening is the explanation of the visitor's speaking procedure. Individuals wishing to address the body may do so on agenda items appearing before us this evening, in which you'll be invited to the podium, followed by making sure that the microphone is on and your identification of where you, who you are and where you live. Item number five on the agenda is the reading of the minutes of the previous meetings from July 16th, 17th, August 13th, and 15th. Attachments one through four in your packets. Older persons, what are your wishes regarding that item?
Make a motion to accept the minutes from the previous meetings.
Motion to approve by Coth. Is there a second? Second by Blazer. Any additions or corrections to the minutes or any discussion? See no requests to speak. Movements to approve, please cast your ballots.
Older person Kubica, you're going to stay with the nay?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Motion carried, six ayes, one nay.
Thank you. Item number six on our agenda this evening is my report. Again, good evening, council members, staff, or those here watching from home. The Mayor's Youth Council had a very successful month, movie night last month with over 150 people in attendance at Robinson Park's first outdoor movie night. We were very fortunate to just miss the storms that happened later after that, but also that evening, there was some wind that came through the park. The Mayor's Youth Council continues to work on the Bicycle Benefits Project with meetings with area businesses and encouraging them or inviting them to sign up for the program, which will give a discount to anyone that bikes to their business with that particular sticker on their helmet indicating the business and the individual's participation. We also had our farewell and send off to our seniors as they are now heading off to college or pursuing other endeavors. With that, we've opened up the application period and will be accepting new members through sometime in September, sorry, October 1st. We've got at least six members that left as a result of them graduating from high school. The Beautification Council has continued to work through their summer preparations for future projects and finishing touches to other projects. The Monarch Way Stations of, was also, the dedication of Monarch Way Stations occurred earlier this summer, and one is just outside City Hall in the rain garden. And there's also been one placed at the River Block building on the riverfront. And the group is now going to be, begin its preparations for winter projects in which the kissing balls downtown have been ordered and will again arrive in November. And the group will also begin preparations for their annual Christmas tree walk taking place at the museum in early December. In the area of parks, we want to remind folks to jump on the city's website or city's social media to review and complete a dog park survey, in which we're inviting community input. The survey will be out until September 1st, and you can find it on the city's website under Dog Friendly Parks section. Want to commend city crews and city staff for their diligence and continued efforts to restore the community and address a lot of the storm recovery efforts over the last month. Hard to believe a month has passed already and a lot of cleanup has already occurred with a bit more yet to do, on top of the other priorities, maintenance projects and construction projects that we've got throughout the city. In the area of the airport, the Airport Commission recently approved the contract to pursue the construction of the Airport Commission hangar. Again, that project will get underway or has begun, at least its preparations, and Altman Construction was apparent a little bitter on that project here from the community. So, nice to see them submit a bid and ultimately be successful in receiving the contract on that project. In the area of aquatics, city staff and a few older persons took a tour last week to see the progress at the Aquatic Center. The foundation walls on the bathhouse have been completed, completed as well as much of the other infrastructure. And over the next few weeks, underground piping will also continue to occur, as well as the base slab formed and poured for one of the other pool vessels. In the activity pool, the base slab has also been poured and rebar installation continues in the main pool. And individuals wishing to tour that project can contact either my office or Public Works Director Joe Terry for inclusion on a list for future tours. So, we'll continue to push that out to older persons who wish to participate in that as well. Phase one, Riverbank restoration continues with some of the grass work, as you probably have seen in that park. The furnishings have arrived and will be installed as schedules permit. In Veterans Memorial Park, the concrete foundation has been poured for the overlooked balcony, and continued stormwater work is progressing in both parks. In East Grand Avenue, folks probably saw that the intersections of Second and Third Street now have been open to cross traffic and concrete work continues on both of those project, on that project. And Lincoln and Jackson Street will also be open, that intersection, to cross traffic. And continued progress, weather permitting, as well as the completion of other contractor work, such as electrical work for street lighting and such. In the category of attended, hosted, and participated, held a River Riders Bike Share event where we biked the Lake Wazicha, also held a Bike Ride with the Mayor last week, which was really widely attended and was a nice night for it. Held coffee with the Mayor sessions in July 23rd at From the Ground Up and the 20th of August, just today, at the Lowell Center. And also gave a presentation to the Noon Rotary Club on city updates, and will give a presentation to the local BNI chapter tomorrow on updates on various projects and initiatives throughout the city. Encourage residents or interested individuals to tune into my radio show tomorrow at 10:00 a.m. on WFHR, which is also live streaming on their website. And with that concludes my report. We'll move on to item number seven on our agenda is recognitions and commendations. Previously, I've included a number of these in my report, but I figured we would call them out on our agenda as items warrant. In the area of city staff, work anniversaries, we want to congratulate the following employees as they celebrate milestone anniversaries within the city. Brian Kreskowski, which celebrated his 25th year with the city, 25th anniversary, sorry, he's our deputy police chief, as many of you, if not all of you, know. Scott Hacker, in the Fire Department for his 20-year anniversary. Karen Anderson and Scott York, Karen in the Assessors Office and Scott in the Streets Department for their 15-year anniversaries. In the 10-year category, Josh Richter and Kathy McEvers, who's operated as a relief clerk, and Josh in the Police Department as a detective. And a five-year anniversary category, Herman Olivares, who's a School Resource Officer, and Jake Guzy, who's also a police officer. And those were from first quarter. In the second quarter area, we had Don, or Jay as all of us know him, Bemke, who celebrated his 35th anniversary with the city. Bruce Shoff, his 30th year in the Street Department. Dwayne Skiba, also in the Street Department with his 30th year. Karen Berlini in the Municipal Court, as a Municipal Court Clerk for her 25th anniversary. Christopher Schultz, in the Street Department, his 15th year. Brad Burris, Police Department, 15 year, as well as Justin Pluse in the Fire Department. In the 10-year, Ben Jennings in the Wastewater Department. And five-year anniversary was Ray Starks, Ordnance Control Officer in the Community Development Department. So, we congratulate them and thank them for their service to our fine city and to our residents. And then, also in the category, I've got a recognition for a resident who is, as I understand, is going to be relocating from our community. Ellen Dahl, who many of you know, but, or if you don't know, has served our city in one capacity or another, whether it's on the Water and Light Commission, the Cemetery Board, or the variety of other commissions in her years of service. So, again, we want to present Ellen Dahl for a certificate of service in recognition for her many years of dedication and service to the city of Wisconsin Rapids on various boards and commissions, and extend much appreciation and gratitude for your years of service. So, Ellen, I'll go ahead and present you with a certificate over by where you're at. Thank you.
We came, I came. It's fine, thank you. As I didn't know that this was going to happen tonight, I didn't make a long, long list of things I wanted to say to you, but we came, I came at 25 and built Dahl's flower gardens with my husband, who at the time was only 23. And he worked at the Water and Light, and I walked to the hospital, believe it or not, and back when we were building our business, as we were just very young and didn't have any money. And have spent all these years, I'm 96 years old now, we've done, not only that, I've belonged, as they say, to the Water and Light and to the city. I just retired from that June 1st after 30 years. So, I love Wisconsin Rapids, and I sort of hate to leave, but my daughter said for 30 years I've been flying in to see you, let them fly out to see you there. So, I am going to go and join her. I'm going to miss Wisconsin Rapids. I'm going to miss all my friends here. Didn't know I had so many until they found out I was leaving. Either that or somebody said they would probably give me the key to the city, but because they know I wouldn't be able to use it because I won't be here. So, thank you very much, and I'm going to miss everybody. Thank you.
Well, thanks again, Ellen, and best wishes to you, safe travels out west, and we know that Wisconsin Rapids will carry a special place in your heart, so thanks again for all your service to the city.
Thank you very much. To everybody.
Item number eight on our agenda this evening is a second reading of the charter ordinance creating a ninth Aldermanic at-large district. See attachment number five in your packets. Older person Blazer, you're first.
I'll make a motion that we approve.
A motion by Blazer, is there a second? There we go. We got a motion by Blazer and a second by Kellogg. Any discussion on the second reading of the ordinance? Older person Kellogg, you're first.
I'm going to be voting no on this ordinance, and, but I like the concept. I think it's just too early. I think when we have the 2020 census, I think we should revisit similar ordinance, if it's this one or another one. I mean, we have apartment complex going in on the west side of town. We have a senior housing complex going near the new YMCA. And I think with the new census, and I think comments that Alderman Rayom made about the committees and the makeup of the committees, maybe that's something to, in my opinion, postpone but not ignore, and maybe in the 2020 census, we get a better handle on where people are living and some ideas of how the committees could be rearranged or reorganized. And so, I'm voting no basically on that concept, but the idea, I think we should revisit some type of Alderman at-large concept, again, if it would pass at that time, so.
Are there any further requests to speak? Older person Zerflu, you're next.
I thought the same as Scott last month. I have come around on the issue, though. I think waiting for the census could take maybe as long as five years by the time it's all done and everything. You know, looking at it, it sounds like this is something we've been kicking around and talking about for a while. I didn't like the idea of, I guess, the position not being, you know, having ownership of a district, but I guess I do see the point of the at-large aspect of it. That's all. Thank you.
Older person Rayom, you're next.
Thank you, Your Honor. I have spoken opposition to this before. I will again, I'll try to keep it short. While I do favor increasing the size of the council, I think that when we do do that, I really do believe that we should look at the redistricting of the city, if that is done with the census. It can be done before that, but that's, I think, we should really look at increasing the size. In this case, it says nine to nine, but it's by redistricting. I just don't, I'm not in agreement with the at-large, and I, I guess, really, I oppose the at-large anyway, but a combination of the two of, one's having certain districts and others, other, in this case, just one for now, being an at-large representative, I just don't think we should have both ways either, you know, representative districts than those that aren't. But I, so I oppose this, I will be voting no. I have, like I said, I have spoken against it before, and I continue to hold those viewpoints. If nine is the number, or 10 in the future, whatever, you know, a lot of people think an odd number is what it, is what it should be. You know, I don't know that it has to be, but in this case, it is to create a, to go to an odd number. But I just think we should look at changing the number, but to do it with redistricting and to go that route, so that's all.
Are there any further requests to speak? See no requests to speak, the motion is to approve. Cast your ballot. Oh, she just says a charter ordinance required.
Motion failed, three ayes, four nays.
Thank you. Item number nine, consider a special ordinance annexing territory to the city of Wisconsin Rapids. The property address is 2331 Saratoga Street. Petitioners are Ken Reeves and Sarah Brandel Reeves. Attachment number six in your packets, actually, it's attachment number six is actually the Aldermanic District, at least. Yes, sir. Older person Rayom?
Not to speak on it myself right now, but there is a gentleman in the audience that informed me that he'd like to speak on this subject, and I would recognize Bill Clendenning. He is from the town of Grand Rapids. If I may do that, I'd recognize him.
Chair Bill, you want to come up and introduce yourself and make sure we, for the record, we just get your address as well?
Yes. Thank you very much for letting me speak. My name is Bill Clendenning. I live at 1811 45th Street South in the town of Grand Rapids. To let you know, I've been in local politics for 34 years. I was also an assessor back in Washeira County. I'd just like to say something about this Saratoga annexation. I know annexation is, was requested, and the three things that have to be met is, first of all, you must want to go, you requesting it. You must be in a continuous line, and the next thing is that the municipality must want you. And those things were met in this, and I was surprised from the Department of Administration. And when it came back to the town of Grand Rapids, the Department of Administration indicated that they kind of wished municipalities would get along, create boundary agreements, so you wouldn't have to have this. Annexation is one of the biggest things we have in Wisconsin Towns Association, and I just want to say it's, with this, it's getting along with your municipalities. There was a big annexation before I moved here to this area, in which most of that side of the river, I understood that for the water purposes. And I would like to speak on the other one when it comes up. Can I speak on that now, on the annexation of the airport?
Are you speaking on behalf of the town, or are you speaking on behalf of yourself as an individual?
Well, as the town, and the reason as the town is because we took a vote on Miss Saratoga one. We took a vote on it, we agreed with the annexation, then we sent it in that way.
Okay, so this one, this one came with a favorable request?
Yes.
From the town?
Yeah.
And I guess the other item is later on the agenda, so it probably makes sense to split the commentary if we could. Well, there's one on the airport, but it's actually not on the, it's in the Planning Commission? That's what you're referring to, Bill?
Yes, yes, I am.
Comes from the?
And we won't be taking that ordinance up tonight? We haven't received anything back from the DOA. Have you on that one?
No, we sent it in, and we also sent an objection into it.
Oh, okay.
We voted as a town board and said no to the annexation, because, like I said, three things have to be met.
Right.
And we thought one of them was not met.
Okay.
We did not want to go. And we did also send another letter about it, about boundary agreements and things like that.
Okay. Because, yeah, we'll bring that annexation ordinance probably to the next, to the next meeting.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. Older persons, let's see, the floor is open, I believe. Older person Blazer?
Just a question, so Grand Rapids is in favor of the read annexation? Okay, thank you.
Yes, yeah, that's correct. Older person Rayom? Okay. Go ahead.
Real quick, in the letter that we did get back on this annexation from the state, hearing that Grand Rapids supports it, it's just that, in the letter is that where they first, they do say it's against the public interest, and, but it goes on that they talk in favor of it, to do it, but also in there it's mentioned, and that's why I just want to talk for a few seconds here, is that, and I don't know that we've ever, that I can't think of any way that we've done anything such as it mentions in here, the town and the city, to look at reaching some sort of a boundary agreement, things like this. This annexation, if you haven't looked at it, look at, look at the map and just see, as they even use the word, I think, fragmented in here in their letter of, oh, this is jogged by 54. It's amazing to look at what's left in the city Grand Rapids, or the town of Grand Rapids, and what's surrounded by the, by the city, and this is another little parcel that would be removed from the township into the city, for sewer and water is basically what they're doing it for. But I don't know if we ever looked at a boundary agreement, or how far we've gotten, if we've ever done that, and if that's the right thing to do, I don't know either, because in this case, it's the, that area is so broken up that it's surrounded by the city, and in this case, we had to make a, an adjustment to actually run, keep our boundary line going down the street to, so that we didn't separate entirely that, a chunk of Grand Rapids, to make it, you know, it'd be an island, as it's mentioned in here, is a, an island would have been created of, that they wouldn't have been connected at all to the township, the few parcels that are left. So, you know, it just may be something that in the future, for certain things, we have to look at if that might be the way to do it or not. It's just, you know, when you look at the map and look at it now, after this parcel would be removed from it, how it's left connected to the township, the few parcels that are left, it's, I guess, amazing to see on the map, so that's all I'm here.
Are there further, actually, the floor is open for a motion on the item.
A move to approve the annexation.
A motion to approve by Zerflu and a second by Catna. Any further requests to speak? Older person Zerflu, you're first.
So, just so I understand, this letter from the DOA, there's, they advise against it, but yet they say there's not necessarily anything wrong with us doing it? I guess what?
Right, there, we don't have to get approval from them in order to annex, and this is, you know, sending, sending to them for review is something that needs to be done when you have a certain population, and, but it's not legally, it's not, it's not a roadblock to us continuing the annexation, and I think they probably even expect that that's what's going to happen, but they're, as you said, there, or as others have said, they're suggesting to talk about a boundary agreement, and I'm happy to hear Mr. Clendenning talk about that, and I think Adam mentioned too, that there's something maybe through the county that might facilitate that.
If I can, the county has been considering potentially joining the North Central Regional Planning Commission in 2020. If that happens, they are a group of planners and others that have done this type of work for other municipalities, and in my experience, it's very difficult for a city and a township just to sit one-on-one and hash out a boundary agreement, because there are needs and wants on both sides, but when you can bring in a neutral party who can coordinate those discussions and help guide that discussion, it's more impactful. So, I am hopeful that if they do join that, that that would be one of the projects I would approach the county to hopefully undertake as part of their membership with that group.
And we did, we did approve this at the Planning Commission meeting, and I remember this was brought up, and that's part of the reason why the traditional road right-of-way is not included in the annexation. So, I don't know if everyone saw that, but I just thought I'd point that out.
Right, and I think Ms. Reeves, is that, she's here, if you, someone wants to recognize her to speak to it?
No, that's fine. Did you want to speak to the body about your request? If you could just come to the podium and just, is that way they can catch you on the recording for tonight? Thank you.
It's, okay. I really didn't have anything to say, other than to be here if you had any questions, and to thank you for annexing our property at your July meeting. Our first read of that letter from the state was muddy, and after the fifth or sixth time reading it, then we realized, our interpretation of it, it was that we could proceed with hooking up water and sewer, and so, we just wanted to respectfully ask that we can move forward with it as soon as possible, and that was it.
Thank you. Older person Blazer, you're next.
I just, can I ask, we already? I just can ask, we already have sewer and water going by there, don't we? Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I believe the letter might have said that too, yeah.
Good.
And this will require two-thirds vote of the body, so six of the seven of you. Any further requests to speak? I guess my only comment was that the request is, or the issues are bigger than your request, probably is what you've decided in your, maybe were able to read between the lines in the letter, right? And I think all of us agree that the boundary agreement could serve us well. It's a matter of would either party wish to come together and bring those issues forward? So classic case of being somewhat in the middle, I suppose. Any further requests to speak, Alder Person's? Seeing none, the motions to approve, please cast your ballots.
Motion carried, seven ayes, zero nays.
Thank you. Thanks for sticking with us on this issue. Welcome to Wisconsin Rapids.
Thank you. I tell everybody I'm from Wisconsin.
Yeah, Bill's saying goodbye. Consider, item 10, consider an ordinance amending certain portions of sections 27.13, 340, period 004, and 340005 of the municipal code addressing the direction of travel on Sixth Street, Seventh Street, and Apple Street. Attachment number seven in your packets. Alder Person Blazer, you're first.
I'll make a motion to approve.
A motion to approve by Blazer. Is there a second? A second by Zurflu? Are there requests to speak? Alder Person Raum, you're first. I had the wrong packet pulled up before.
Anyway, having read through this, and I at the committee meeting did have some questions, I believe, I did vote for it, but having read the ordinance over, I do have some, I guess, questions and maybe it'd be some information for people. And I guess if I read it wrong, you can let me know. Making these one-way streets into two-way streets is one thing. And obviously, then what has to go along with it, stop signs to be added where there weren't. Parking is being changed, that's on there. There's a parking lot that, a school parking lot that's across this, by Sixth Streets, one that goes by the old East Junior High, the old high school there. Those streets, instead of one-way there in front of the school, would be two-way. And again, up on Seventh Street, the one next to the east of that would be, become two-way, again, all the way to Grand Avenue. And Apple Street then, coming from Eighth to behind the ballpark, would be, come two-way all the way. The reason I mention the parking lot, it'd be to, I guess, where, I assume that the entrance would be off of Sixth Street, the exit would be out onto Apple Street. Obviously, that's going to be a two-way street now versus what it has been. So it's going to have, you know, take some adjustment to, obviously, the school isn't functioning as a school as it was. There are things in the school that are taking place that weren't there before, some departments that have been transferred into the Old East. It's by no means has the number of people that the school had at the time when it was functioning, but there are different departments in there now that weren't in there from the school. It'll also, as I read this, that parking on Sixth and Seventh Street would only be on one side of the street and not two, as I read this. It'd be on the west side. And obviously, I think from going to two-way, two-way traffic, the streets aren't wide enough to have parking on both sides, which then again raises the issue of alternate side parking that we currently have. Obviously, they'd have, if I'm reading this right, that that would be then affected by it, that the parking would only be on one side. So that's just some, you know, reading this over, having, and as I said, I did, I do believe supported it as it went through the committee process, but that there were questions that I had raised and also about having be able to look at it in ordinance form. So it has raised some issues. There may not be enough that, you know, to turn down reversing that. But I think to think about, to me anyway, Apple Street being two-way, then all the way from Eighth Street to behind the ballpark, that would be, that becomes a straight-through street with no, there wouldn't be a stop sign on that street, say at Sixth Street. Sixth Street would still have a stop sign, as it does now, for people. That would be as now as you'd be going south on Sixth Street, that there's a stop sign, you either turn left, go towards Eighth Street, or you can go right into the back, in behind the old fieldhouse and behind, which is, as I say, behind the ballpark there on the third base side. So it's just, those are just some thoughts, issues, concerns, I guess, that came to mind as I read this over. If I, again, if I did read for sure which side the parking was on or not. So just information for everybody that I wanted to share with. Thank you.
Are there further requests to speak? Alder Person Kuba-Shack, you're next.
Yeah, real quick, I was against it. I voted no at the committee meeting. And one of the reasons why I did is because of the safety concern. I don't want to be the guy that voted for it and a kid gets hit. That area is busy. And interestingly, I actually took a drive after the committee meeting in that area, and the streets are rather narrow. And it's, the rafters games are only going to get busier and people parking that back parking lot. I know in the past, when I went with my buddies and their kids, kids run across the street the minute that they get out of the van. Well, at least they know that traffic pattern is one-way, so they only look one-way. But when it changes this, like I said, I don't want that on my conscience. So I think we can always change this. We can do a traffic study. We can look at this and that and everything else. But once we change it, we can't change it back. So that's all I got. Thanks.
Alder Person Zurflu, you're next.
Just wanted to add the aquatic part to that, too. Thank you.
Are there further requests to speak? Joe, did you want to speak on the matter at all since you were there at the committee meeting?
Just a couple of things, I guess, real quick. We did go through after the Public Works meeting and review the vision at the intersections. That was one thing that was brought up. So we did that. We checked everything out in regards to vehicle visibility at those intersections coming from two directions now. Everything checked out there. Beyond that, I guess I'd just add that safety is paramount for making changes to traffic control.
Are there any further requests to speak? We have a motion and a second to approve as presented. Seeing no further requests, please cast your ballots.
Motion failed, one ayes, six nays.
Thank you. Item number 11, consider for adoption the actions of the Planning Commission meeting as followed. Item A is a planning commission meeting held on July 15th, in which the planning commission met at 4:00 PM on July 15th in the first-floor conference room here at City Hall. Members present included myself, Alder Person Joe Zurflu, Tom Bry, Lee Tao, and Sue Wesley. And the rest of those present are on file in the clerk's office. Item one was a review and discussion on the update of the sign ordinance of CivTech. The sign ordinance and potential changes were reviewed and a public draft will be completed by the consultant with the goal of hosting a public open house on the draft in August, which says a comment was held last night. And item two, adjournment, a motion, a second to adjourn, and that motion carried unanimously and the meeting adjourned at 5:15 PM. I'm assuming we can move on to packaging these since there was no action taken on that. Item 11B is a planning commission meeting held on August 5th. Planning commission met on August 5th at 4:00 PM here in the first-floor conference room at City Hall. Members present included myself, Shane Burkhardt, Dan Hanson, and Sue Wesley. Members present and those in attendance are on file and actually attached, I guess, now. The meeting was called order at 4:03 PM. Item one is approval of the reports from the July 1st and July 15th planning commission meetings. There was a motion, a second, to approve the reports from July 1st and July 15th, 2019 planning commission meetings, and that motion carried unanimously. Item two, under maps and plaits received. Item A was Eric Fanning CSM, in which the applicant is requesting a certified survey map approval for the reconfiguration of one parcel and the dedication of property as public road right-of-way. Subject property is located at 2986 State Highway 13, or sorry, 73 North. There's a motion, a second, to approve, subject to the required right-of-way dedication on State Highway 13, State Highway 73, and that motion carried unanimously. Item B, Casey Rowe CSM, the applicant has requested certified survey map approval for the combination to two parcels into one, and the dedication of property is public road right-of-way. Subject properties are located at 2341 and 2351 Eighth Street South. There's a motion, a second, to approve that CSM, and that motion carried unanimously. There are no maps, no other maps or plaits received. Item three, airport commission annexation. The applicant is requesting annexation of the Alexander Field Airport Terminal and surrounding property to the city of Wisconsin Rapids. Subject property is located at 3621 First Street North, Fourth Street South, and is just under four acres in size. There's a motion, a second, to approve the annexation request, and that motion carried unanimously. Item four, planning commission, Plan 190494 Airport Commission. The applicant is requesting site architectural plan of operation review for proposed airport hangar within the I-1 Institutional District pending annexation. The subject property is located at 3621 First Street South. Ryan Falch from MSA provided an overview of the project. There was a motion, a second, to approve with the following conditions, the first being approval is subject to annexation and zoning approval by the city council for the subject property. And item two, a landscape plan shall be submitted to staff for approval prior to the issuance of a building permit. Landscaping shall consist of the required foundation plantings, and landscaping shall be installed prior to issuance of an occupancy permit for the facility. And item three was compliance with all the applicable codes and ordinances, and that motion carried unanimously. Item five was Plan 190587, Casey Rowe, the applicant is requesting site architectural plan of operation review for a proposed accessory storage building within the B-2 General Commercial District. Subject property is located at 2341 Eighth Street South. And Casey Rowe, the applicant, provided an overview of the project, of which she owns Rapids Floral. The motion, there was a motion, a second, to approve, and the, subject to the following conditions, the first being exterior materials and design of the building shall be constructed with materials and color palette to complement the existing commercial building. Item two, in addition to the planting shown on the site plan, street frontage landscaping shall be provided within 10 feet of the right-of-way, consistent with the landscape code, and landscaping shall be installed prior to issuing an occupancy permit for the building. And the third being approval is subject to the subject property being combined with a commercial property to the south. Item four was a garbage enclosure for the dumpster pad located on site shall be provided in construction of wood fencing or other similar materials. And item five was compliance with other applicable codes and ordinances, and that motion carried unanimously. Item six was Mariani Packing, Plan 190604. The applicant is requesting site architectural and plan of operation review for, in addition to an existing facility within the M1 General Commercial District, Industrial District, sorry, the subject property is located at 6011 Washington Street. Steve Berlin, the applicant, provided an overview of the project. There was a motion, a second, to approve with the following conditions, that item one is a food-grade manufacturer, that Mariani is not allowed to have landscaping in close proximity to their plant. As a result, the foundation landscaping requirement is being waived. And item two is compliance with other applicable codes and ordinances, and that motion carried unanimously. Item seven, Plan, which is Wheeler Family of Companies, Plan 190637. The applicant is requesting site architectural plan of operation review for the renovation and expansion of an existing commercial, existing building, removal of a building and other site improvements within the B-2 General Commercial District. Subject property is located at 2250 West Grand Avenue. Randy Schiller, applicant, provided an overview of the project. There was a motion, a second, to approve with the following conditions. The exterior materials and design of the building shall be constructed in substantial performance with the proposed plans by Don Nicolai Construction. Item two is a landscape plan shall be submitted for review and approval by planning staff prior to the issuance of any building permits. Landscaping shall be provided for street-fronted and paved areas may be spread throughout the entire Wheeler development. Landscaping shall be installed prior to issuing an occupancy permit for the facility. Item three was a photometric plan shall be submitted for review and approval by planning staff prior to the issuance of any building permits. With lighting, shall not exceed .2-foot candles at the property line nor exceed 100,000 lumens per acre. The fourth is the existing green space located on the east side of the parcel shall remain as open space until such time as evidence is presented to staff on the need for additional hard surface areas. Item five, if outdoor, outside dumpster areas are established, they comply with 11.06.203 Pern 13 of the zoning code regarding screening. Next, if existing paved areas are reconstructed, they shall comply with 11.17.03 Pern 1, Pern 4 of the zoning code regarding parking lot design. And finally, compliance with all other applicable codes and ordinances, and that motion carried unanimously. And item eight was adjournment. There was a motion, a second, to adjourn. Motion carried unanimously with the meeting adjourned at 5:15 PM. Alder Persons, what are your wishes regarding those two planning commission reports?
Motion to approve both reports.
Motion to approve by Zurflu. Is there a second? Second by Kellogg. Alder Person Raum, you're first.
A question on one, I think I asked this before, so to refresh my memory. Adam, on number six, I believe, the Mariani one of the second report, that's for a waste storage building. Could you just refresh my memory? That doesn't have anything added that's going to the treatment plant or anything?
Correct, yep. It's just enclosing what is now an outdoor storage area. So basically, because of winter and the lovely weather we have, it impacts their production if they have to store things and get things from outside. So they're basically enclosing an existing storage area. So it doesn't actually create any additional waste.
Thank you. That's what I needed, was a refresher on my memory, which fails at times. The other one is, I do believe Bill wanted to speak on one of the items. Again, Your Honor, Clendenning, if he still does, I would recognize him, and I believe it was on the airport annexation.
Bill, did you want to speak on that particular item, despite it officially not being on our agenda tonight as an advisory?
Yes, thank you.
Yeah.
I should have asked that first, if...
I think, yeah, if it's not an official position of the town, since we haven't received any...
Speaking as a, not as a town-born member, as a resident.
Okay.
I was an airport commissioner for a few years. I also worked at the airport for three months in an internship there when we lost our FBO. I just, I just think it's a way to get along. You know, the city of Nacusa is part of it, the city of Wisconsin Rapids is part of it, the village of Port Edwards is part of it, and also the town of Grand Rapids. The, what bothers me the most is, is the terminal building already has sewer and water. And nobody can find out how that ever happened. But it happened. And I'm going to tell you, it happened because we all got along. At that time, there was other people also involved in it, such as the village of Byrnes and a couple of other towns. And that's why it is. And my understanding, and I went to just every airport commission meeting there was, and not once, I went there as a resident, not once did I ever hear that the annexation was also going to consider the terminal building. And I've looked at the minutes and have not seen that. So when it come along, I asked, you know, why all of a sudden is the terminal building? And I was told, and you can listen to this, at the meeting of the town of Grand Rapids... And I was told, and you can listen to this, at the meeting of the town of Grand Rapids. It was indicated there, and it was spoke by the chairman of our town, said, "Well, we had to annex that because the city threatened to take the sewer out of there if we wouldn't do it." That's what was said. I'm not sitting, standing here lying. You can listen to it because it was a tape meeting. And that was said. And the other thing is, is I just don't like the way, if we want to get along with a city and, you know, in the town, in the aquatic center, in bike trails and stuff like that, I think we're always hitting heads. And this is another way we're hitting heads. Why can't, if there's village of Port Edwards who would have to, if they wanted to build a hangar on their part of the property there, and to get sewer and water to that, they would have to probably extend some sewer lines a long way. Wouldn't it be nice if the city of Wisconsin Rapids says, hey, we're all one group, we're a family out here, we own the Alexander Airport, it was given to us, that we could just get along and put these things in as a, as a city, as a village, and as a town? That's what I'd like to see happen. Thank you.
Thank you. And of course, I think the alderpersons know it would require a change in the ordinance for us to extend services to those facilities in order for us to service them. Alderperson, Alderperson Rayom, did you have anything further? Otherwise, I'll go to Alderperson Kubaszek.
I'd like to hold item number 3 out.
Request to hold item 3 out. Is there an objection to holding item 3 out? Call for unanimous consent, hearing no objection, we'll withhold item number 3. Which is the annexation. Right. Yeah, it's just an advisory or a recommendation from the commission to council. Yeah. Okay. Any further requests to speak on the balance of the report? Seeing none, we've got a motion to approve. A second, please cast your ballots.
Motion carried, seven ayes, zero nays.
That leaves item 11B 3. Alderpersons, what are your wishes regarding that item?
I'll make a motion to approve the item.
Motion to approve by Zurflu. Is there a second? A second by Kellogg. Are there any requests to speak? Alderperson, Blazer, you're first.
I was just going to ask, since this is advisory, does a no vote or a yes vote really mean anything? I know it's a loaded question.
Well, not really, because all of our, all of our annexations first have to go to the Planning Commission for a recommendation. So that recommendation could be up, could be down. No matter what that is, the council would still decide what they would like to do once the ordinance was in front of them. So it's merely a recommendation. The reason that, obviously, the ordinance is not before you right now is because I think it was just filed at the end of July, I think. We have to send stuff to the DOA. You cannot consider, even consider it until you get their, their recommendation from the DOA. So that's why it takes some time after it goes to planning. So, yeah, whether you vote yes or no on it, it really doesn't matter. This ordinance is going to come back or will be on the agenda probably next month, I would say.
Okay, thank you. Alderperson Kubaszek, you're next. Actually, Alderperson Rayom is next. Do I understand that? Yeah. Okay. Pass, okay. Alderperson Kubaszek?
I think that, well, obviously, it went through advisory commission, but if this is a case where the city is strong-arming our neighbors, we're in big trouble. I think that that's bad practice, so I guess even if this is just advisory and voting no.
Well, I think to further clarify the allegation that, or maybe the characterization that there was a bullying, the commission are stronger, I mean, the Airport Commission considered this on a number of occasions, of which the commission made a positive recommendation to pursue annexation on at least two occasions. So commission could have decided to not pursue annexation, and that could have, that would have been their prerogative at that point. Any further requests to speak? Seeing none, the motion is to approve. Cast your ballots.
Motion carried, five ayes, two nays.
Thank you. Item 12, consider for adoption the actions of the standing committee of the common council as follows. Item 12A is the Finance and Property Committee meeting held on August 6th. Alderperson Coth, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Your Honor. The Property and Finance Committee met at 5:00 PM on Tuesday, August 8th, in the first floor conference room at City Hall. All members were present. Others in attendance are on file. Meeting was called to order at 5:00 PM. First item of business was consider a request from the Wisconsin Rapids Police Department to apply for a grant that would transfer the remaining balance of the Legacy Detective Grant to the K-9 Program. It was moved by Blazer, seconded by Coth to approve applying for, for a grant to the Legacy Foundation to transfer the balance of the Legacy Detective Grant to the K-9 Program. Motion carried. Item 3, consider a special event application and premise extension request from CNC Steckbauer LLC doing business as Whiskey Rapids Saloon located at 150 Second Street North for a bags tournament held on August 24th, 2019, from 10:00 AM to 12:00 AM. It was moved by Blazer, seconded by Coth to approve the special event application and premise extension request from CNC Steckbauer LLC doing business as Whiskey Rapids Saloon located at 150 Second Street North for a bags tournament held on August 4th, 2019, from 10:00 AM to 12:00 AM. Motion carried. Item number 4 was consider a special event application and premise extension request from BCA Enterprises LLC doing business as Bee's Tap House located at 140 East Grand Avenue for a Never Forgotten Honor Flight Street Dance held on September 6th, 2019, from 5:00 PM to 10:00 PM. Was moved by Coth, seconded by Catnaugh to approve the special event application and premise extension request from BCA Enterprises LLC doing business as Bee's Tap House located at 140 East Grand Avenue for a Never Forgotten Honor Flight Street Dance held on September 6th from 5:00 PM to 10:00 PM. Motion carried. Item number 5, consider temporary Class B beer and Class B wine license for Our Lady Queen of Heaven Parish located at 750 10th Avenue South for a church picnic held on August 25th from 10:00 AM to 6:00 PM. It was moved by Blazer, seconded by Coth to approve a temporary Class B beer and Class B wine license for Our Lady Queen of Heaven Parish located at 750 10th Avenue South for a church picnic held on August 25th, 2019, from 10:00 AM to 6:00 PM. Motion carried. Item number 6 was consider for approval a Class B liquor license application and Class B beer license application for Lucky's on Second Street LLC, Lucky's on Second LLC. Lee Chipman agent doing business as Lucky's on Second LLC for the premise located at 126 Second Street North. It was moved by Coth, seconded by Blazer to approve the Class B liquor license application and a Class B beer license application for Lucky's on Second LLC. Lee Chipman agent doing business as Lucky's on Second LLC for the premise located at 126 Second Street North. Motion carried. Item number 7 was consider for approval a taxi cab operator's license application for alley cab doing business as Alley Cab Allison Renzi applicant. It was moved by Catnaugh, seconded by Blazer to approve the taxi cab operator's license application for alley cab doing business as Alley Cab Alley Renzi agent. Motion carried. Out of the bills. It was moved by Coth, seconded by Blazer to hold this item over until the next regularly scheduled Finance and Property Committee meeting. Motion carried. Item number 9, beverage operator licenses. It was moved by Blazer, seconded by Catnaugh to approve the beverage operator license applications and applications. It was moved by Blazer, seconded by Catnaugh to approve the beverage operator license applications and the applications with outstanding obligations. The approval is contingent upon these applications being paid in full. Motion carried. List of approved applicants is on file. Item number 10 was to set the next meeting date. The next regularly scheduled Finance Committee meeting will be held September 3rd, 2019, at 4:45 PM. Item number 11 was adjournment. It was moved by Blazer, seconded by Coth to adjourn. Motion carried. The meeting adjourned at 5:29 PM. With that, a move for adoption of the minutes.
Motion to approve by Coth and a second by Zurflu. Are there any requests to speak? Alderperson Rayom, you're first.
Thank you, Your Honor. Just, let's see, question or two in a, just, well, involves number 6, but the new tavern going in Lucky's is being called. How many licenses are available, Sue? Or does somebody have the answer? Okay.
We have five licenses available. Not counting Lucky's.
Not counting Lucky's, okay.
Correct. We also have three reserve licenses available.
Okay. Thank you. I think that was a question, I think that did come up that night at the meeting, and we didn't have the answer, I don't think, for sure, so, or, not at all, I guess, because those numbers weren't mentioned, to my recollection, anyway, so. And the other on that, on the same subject, and I was getting to the right page, as Steve, you're reading it, I think on, with Lucky's there, did you say the Class B beer and Class B liquor for the X's? Because on the, on the form there, the one with, the one is, and again, I think a question was asked that evening, but I think it was, the people understood that that's what it was, but the class, reserved Class B liquor, looks like it might have been X to start with by mistake and then is scratched out. Is that, I think that's what you read, I was trying to find the page here, I just wanted to clarify it. Jennifer, maybe you got it.
The application was for a Class B beer and Class B liquor, not a reserve.
Okay.
Yeah. He did mark it wrong and then changed it.
Yeah.
Yeah, I remember that too, Tom, so that's.
Are there further requests to speak? Seeing no further requests to speak, motions to approve, please cast your ballots.
Motion carried, seven ayes, zero nays.
Thank you. Item 12B, the Public Works Committee meeting held on August 6th, 2016. Alderperson Kubaszek?
Public Works Committee met at 6:00 PM on Tuesday, August 6th, 2019, in the first floor conference room at City Hall. Thaddeus Kubaszek, Tom Rayom, and Shane Blazer were present. Shane sat in for Lee Graff. Others attending are on file in the clerk's office. Number one called to order, meeting was called to order at 6:00 PM. Item number 2, review and consider approving garbage and recycling services to mobile home parks and residential units above commercial entities, and direct the city attorney to make the necessary changes to the municipal code that will reflect the spirit of the committee. No action was taken. Item number 3, review and discuss storm damage and cleanup efforts. Public Works Superintendent Paul Wallard updated the committee on the storm cleanup efforts. Item number 4, review and consider approving a relocation order for Third Avenue South from Goggan Street to Johnson Street. No action was taken. Item number 5, review and consider approving construction bids for Third Avenue South from Goggan Street to Johnson Street. Motion by Blazer, seconded by Rayom, was, seconded by Rayom to reject all bids. Motion carried, 3 to 0. Item number 6, review and consider approving a change order request for East Riverbank Phase 2 steps and balcony railing. Motion by Rayom, seconded by Blazer, was approved to change, was carried to approve a change order request for East Riverbank Phase 2 steps and balcony railing. Motion carried, 2 to 1. Item number 7, review and discuss approving the recommendation to convert 6th and 7th Street South between Apple Street and East Grand Ave, and Apple Street between 6th Street South and 7th Street South from one-way to two-way traffic upon completion of the East Grand Avenue project. Motion by Blazer, seconded by Rayom, was carried to convert 6th Street South, 7th Street South between Apple Street and East Grand Ave, and Apple Street between 6th Street South and 7th Street South from one-way to two-way traffic upon completion of the East Grand Ave project. Motion carried, 2 to 1. Item number 8, DPW report. The DPW report was reviewed. Item number 9, review referral list. The referral list was reviewed. Item number 10, adjournment. Motion by Rayom, seconded by Blazer, was carried to adjourn. Motion carried, 3 to 0. Meeting adjourned at 8:05 PM.
Alderpersons, what are your wishes regarding that report?
I'll make a motion to approve the report as read.
A motion by Zurflu and a second by Catnaugh. Are there any requests to speak? Seeing none, the motions to approve, please cast your ballots.
Motion carried, seven ayes, zero nays.
Item 12, Human Resources Committee meetings on the July 17th, August 7th, and August 13th. Alderperson Blazer, floor is yours.
Looked like I'm the winner this month. Right, the first one, minutes of July 17th. The Human Resource Committee met at 5:00 PM on July 17th in the third floor conference room at City Hall. Persons in attendance are on file at the city clerk's office. The meeting was called to order at 5:01. The committee considered a grievance filed by the Wisconsin Rapids Professional Police Association. The subject of this agreement was a pay for a patrol officer who had been ordered over past his normal scheduled shift. In open session, a motion was made by Alderperson Zurflu, seconded by Kellogg, to go into closed session under Section 19.85 parant 1, parant E of the Wisconsin statutes, which reads, deliberating and negotiating the purchasing of public properties, the investing of public funds, and conducting other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining resource, reasons require a closed session. A roll call vote was taken, and all members voted in affirmative. Motion carried. In closed session, the committee discussed settlement and/or disposition of the WRPPA grievance. A motion was made by Alderperson Zurflu, seconded by Alderperson Kellogg, to move into open session. The roll call, a roll call vote was taken, all members voted in affirmative. Motion carried. In open session, a motion was made by Chairperson Blazer, seconded by Alderperson Zurflu, to sustain the grievance filed by WRPPA. Motion carried. The officer will receive two hours' call time and two hours of pay at time and one half or additional hours worked on May 28, 2000, or, May 28, 2019. The committee also strongly recommend that specific, specific pay practices for compensating officers who are required to work past their normal shift time be laid out more clearly in subsequent collective bargaining agreement. The meeting was adjourned at 5:38 PM. With that, I move for adoption of the report.
A motion to approve by Blazer and a second by Zurflu. Are there any requests to speak? Seeing none, motions to approve, please cast your ballots.
Motion carried, seven ayes, zero nays.
Okay. The Human Resource Committee met at 4:45 PM on August 7th, 2019, in the police department training room. All committee members were present, and the list of other attendees can be found in the city clerk's office. The meeting was called to order at 4:46 PM. A presentation was provided by Sarah Christensen, Ideal Consulting. Sarah gave an overview of the engagement survey results and point-of-view interviews for the city employees. Copy of the presentation is available through Community Access Department. That meeting was adjourned at 5:55 PM. And with that, I'll move for the adoption of that report.
Motion to approve by Blazer, is there a second? Second by Zurflu. Are there any requests to speak? Seeing none, the motions to approve, please cast your ballots.
Motion carried, seven ayes, zero nays.
Lastly, the Human Resource Committee met at
Lastly, the Human Resource Committee met at 5:05 PM on Tuesday, August 13, 2019, in the first floor conference room. Alderpersons Zerflu and Kubaschak were present. Also present were Alderpersons Coth, Katnaugh, Mayor Verwink, Attorney Roman, and City Attorney Souchelle. The meeting was called to order at 5:10 PM by Alderperson Zerflu. Alderperson Blazer had requested that Alderperson Kubaschak sit in for him, for this meeting. There is no objection, and Alderperson Kubaschak sat in, was seated for Alderperson Blazer. In open session, the motion, a motion was made by Zerflu, seconded by Kubaschak, to go into closed session under Section 19.85, Pern 1, Pern G, which reads, "Conferring with legal counsel for the governmental body who is rendering oral or written advice concerning strategy, strategy to be adopted by the body with respect to litigation in which it is or is likely to become involved." Roll call vote was taken by Zerflu, taken, and Zerflu and Kubaschak voted in the affirmative. Motion carried. In closed session, the committee conferred with legal counsel regarding litigation matter that the city is involved in and discussed legal advice, settlement negotiations, and strategy. Motion by Zerflu, seconded by Kubaschak, to adjourn in closed session. Motion carried, and the committee did adjourn in closed session at 7:20 PM. With that, I move for the adoption of the report.
A motion to approve by Blazer and a second by Kellogg. Are there any requests to speak? Seeing none, motions to approve, please cast your ballots.
Seven i's, zero n's.
Item 13, reports of other committees, commissions, and boards, departmental reports. Item A, the McMillan Memorial Library, held March 20th. Item B, the Housing Authority, held March 27th, April 24th, and May 29th. Item C, the Wisconsin Rapids Ethics, Ethics Board, held February 14th and August 6th. Item D, the Wisconsin Rapids Fire Department Monthly Summary for July. Item E, the Southwood County Airport Commission, held on July 10th, July 17th, and July 22nd. Item F, the Wastewater Treatment Commission, held on July 7, August 17, 7th, sorry. Item G, the Waterworks and Lighting Commission, held July 10th. Item H, the Police and Fire Commission, held July 10th. Item I, the Zoning Board of Appeals, held August 13th. And item J, the Committee, the whole, held August 15th. Alderpersons, what are your wishes regarding those reports?
I'll move to approve the report.
Motion by Zerflu, is there a second? Second by Kellogg. Alderperson Coth, you're first.
Um, I just want to take a moment to talk about, one, the reports that I received from our police chief, for his report that was put together on the 6th of August, if I can do that, Your Honor?
Of course.
Okay. Um, I know this day and age, law enforcement necessarily has always looked at it a favorable light, but I believe for our viewing public at home and for the citizens of Wisconsin Rapids, our police department deserves some recognition for, uh, some operations that they did with an overtime fund. Um, I think it really shows that our police department is out there doing, doing the best possible job that they could. And the note from the police department, or the police chief, he notes that on July 17th, with, uh, the personnel that they had, um, they were able to search six vehicles and get six drug arrests for possession of methamphetamine, cocaine, and THC. On July 23rd, they conducted seven vehicle searches, which resulted for five arrests for possession of THC and three with outstanding warrants. But I think the biggest thing that speaks for community safety is this operation resulted in the recovery of seven stolen firearms, and it got those guns off the street. And for that, I think our police department deserves, um, huge recognition for making Wisconsin Rapids a safer place and getting guns and drugs off our street. And I thank you and your men, Chief.
Thank you. Alderperson Blazer, you're next.
Well, I thank Mr. Coth, because I echo that statement. I, I have to be, I'm very impressed that this is, this is funds that the council requested to be set aside for this type of operation, and, and I also commend them that, for the amount of arrests that they did make in clearing several burglary investigations, and I also commend them. Thank you.
Chief, did you have anything in response to that, those comments?
Yeah, I would also just like to give credit where credit's due. Wood County Sheriff's Department played a big part in our operations, and they, you know, we invited them in, and they took the ball and ran with it, too, so credit to Wood County as well.
Great. Thank you. Alderperson Kellogg, you're next.
At the latest Public Works Committee, uh, we complimented the employees with regard to the storm. It was unbelievable, as we all know the storm and the amount of effort it took to clean up. And they also complimented the Water and Light Commission. And since I attended the meeting, I carried that message to them, and they wanted to compliment the employees from, uh, Wisconsin Rapids on how well they worked together. So, I want to pass that on.
Thank you. Alderperson Kubaschak, you're next.
Thank you. I wanted also, um, uh, suggest what Mr. Kellogg just mentioned, um, at the Public Works Committee meeting. I mean, with this storm that we had, it was, um, uh, something that we haven't had in a long time, since 2001, and then it was even worse with the power outages. So, I mean, regardless of, of what department, I think city staff in general has been doing a wonderful job this summer with a lot of the challenges posed. So, that, yeah, it, everybody's doing a good job. Thanks.
Thank you. Any further requests to speak? I'll just call one item out of the, um, uh, the utilities report. It was around the Matalco substation. You can see that they've moved forward with the transformer purchase and some of the electrical equipment, um, for the Matalco project. And just earlier, actually, late last week, the foundation and footing permits were pulled and, and, uh, secured for the Matalco project for them to get started on some of their work. So, the additional permits will follow, and we'll share more updates as to the, the updates on that project. Just wanted to call out, since it was in the, the utility report as well, that they're beginning to work on that. I understand that, from talking to the general manager yesterday, they're still waiting for PSC to give them information on their, um, uh, power rates, but nonetheless, things move, are moving forward on Matalco front as well. Well, Alderperson Rayom, you're next.
Thank you, Your Honor. Last thing, I think, for this evening, for me, anyway. Just, uh, a comment. I know that, uh, we can't really do anything with this, other than, I guess, right, on these, other than ask the commission, a commission, to look at something again or whatever. But anyway, I just want to make a comment or two about the item, uh, item A, uh, let's see, I under this, under the reports, 13I, zoning board of appeals. Now, and I'm not really sure where to start. We have many of these, uh, facilities within the community. This is, uh, a unique one in some, in some ways. I know that Scott was able, you were at the meeting, uh, at this meeting here a few days ago. Uh, it, uh, and they have a right to be there, to have this facility where they are, I do believe. The request is to have a, uh, a taller fence than is allowed in a residential area unless you're connected to, in a commercial area. We've had problems with some facilities in, in the past. Scott has one right, uh, in his neighborhood next door, uh, that there were a lot of problems with, uh, originally, years ago. I had one that was, uh, a block and a half from me. I do believe that they, they take in eight, uh, eight people at a time. Uh, there has to be eight people there on staff all the time, one per one. Uh, there were a lot of problems there with, uh, uh, people just walking away. They'd appear in neighbors' houses, uh, sitting on the back patios and that. But what, what wasn't done is they didn't go to, uh, putting up, uh, a large fence to keep the people in. There was more of an attempt, at least, supposed to have been an attempt that was made to, uh, uh, the word nowadays, I guess, is vet people, of what, uh, what people that you would, uh, let into these facilities. And obviously, there is a need for a facility for these people, and that's why it is, uh, it is, uh, tough to, to talk about, but hopefully, in this case, is that, and I know the administration here, uh, recommend, recommended, strongly recommended denial. But, uh, what, uh, by adding two feet to the fence, if, uh, uh, somebody with, uh, that type of behavioral, uh, capacity is in there, I don't know that, uh, to wreak havoc on the fence, is that adding two feet in height, I don't know if that is, uh, what would, uh, do that. And I, the, uh, as the question was stated by the representative from the, from the company here, and it's same company that has a couple other facilities, anyway, at least in town, in the city, uh, is, uh, the question before the board was not whether the facility should be in this location, it's rather whether the fence, uh, deserves variance. Well, um, I guess the, the board, the zoning board here of appeals saw that it needed, that two feet added in height would, may, may help. It would help, uh, the neighbor in the immediate area. There were, there are a lot of rental unit, units in that area. I will agree to that. This is on Baker Street. There just seems to be, to me, there must be a way that, uh, you know, is this the right place for a person with those, um, that has those problems, uh, if, to be put in a residential area, and basically, they're locked in. Uh, the backyard is fenced in, uh, so, you know, I, I, I don't know that, if really, if the city, if, you know, what the representative from the company that was there said the issue is about the variance, uh, it's not whether the facility can be there. It just seems that, uh, you know, not just here in Wisconsin Rapids, but all over, that, uh, I don't know that we've really addressed the issue of how to, uh, help these people. And, uh, by in a facility, in a, you know, it's a very narrow lot, there, uh, they just, it's, I don't know if that, this is just the right location in my mind. We do have a lot of, a lot of these facilities, but, uh, not too many, at least to my knowledge, that have, uh, the residents, that have residents that show violent, uh, outbursts. And I, I probably should have started, and I even asked or checked in for, uh, I don't know if the PD's had, had any reports on this, uh, have gotten in that we got, that it went so far as to have a variance on this, uh, on, on the height of the fence, or, uh, or not. There was damage being done to the fence from this, uh, individual, is my understanding is. So, I, I, you know, I, I debated if I should even say anything, bring it up this evening, but it's something that, uh, does weigh on my mind, and I just don't think, not, as I said, not just, not just here in Rapids, but I think all over, all over the country, that we don't do enough for, in the right way, maybe, to, uh, help these people. And, uh, some need a lot more help and care than others do, so, thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you. Attorney Shill?
If I could just speak to that, I, I guess I was going to make a referral possibly to have the city consider appealing that decision, because I, it, in my mind, it has absolutely no basis in law. It, zoning and variances are about the property, the uniqueness of the property. It has nothing to do with the people living there, or how they might behave, or the business that might be there. It has to be a unique, uh, property, so, um, I guess I had considered doing that, that has to be done. I think, Adam, when did you file this?
It's within 30 days of the decision, and the decision was last Tuesday.
But was the order, the decision and order actually given to the person, like, on that day?
Uh, it was mailed out Thursday.
Okay. And I don't know, I, I know your, your comments were not just about that, but I guess that, that was a decision that, um, you might consider appealing, because I, like I said, I, I don't think it had any basis in, in law, and did not apply the correct standards for a variance.
Alderperson Kellogg, you're next.
Um, I disagree with Attorney Shill. You have ordinances, and you have requirements with regard to that, but once you place a home, a residential housing facility like this, in your neighborhood, um, it's a different ballgame. It's a different ballgame. If you live next door, if you, if it's in the middle of the block, and when that, that home came into our neighborhood, it was a, a challenge for everyone. And, um, the neighborhood met with the owner, and we worked it out. And, um, some of these, um, I'm worried about, what, whatage? Some of the people that, um, are in these facilities have challenges, and the neighborhood has, has now accepted that. There's a hiccup here or there, and we worked with the police department here or there, and, um, but, uh, it's, it's working out. But if you place homes similar to this in neighborhoods, and if the neighborhood and the home would like to make accommodations, so a fence is two feet higher, uh, give me a break. And according to, the result, if it sold a home, they would have to reduce it down to six feet. So, if it's going to make the immediate neighbors happy, the owner of the home happy, um, I don't understand, I mean, you could have laws and, and reality, and it just seems silly to, to contradict the four, zero vote to increase that fence. And, um, live next to one of these homes. Live next to one of these homes, and you'll think different.
Alderperson Rayom, you're next. No? Okay. Attorney Shill, does you have anything more to say?
I was merely pointing out the law as applied to the case. I, I, unfortunately, zoning isn't about the types of people that necessarily live there in terms of getting a variance. The variance, from a, from a, an area variance or use variance, it has to have unique property limitations. It has to be something about the property that does not allow, that, that you need relief from that, that setback or that, that height. So, I'm, I'm just saying that when you go down the slope of dictate, or basing it on the type of use or who's living there, then, you know, if I have three kids and they're running all over the place, then am I going to be able to go get a, go to the ZBA and, and try to have my fence higher, or my neighbors say my fence should be higher because my kids are running all over? I mean, it, it-
I mean, it has nothing to do with the behavior of the tenants. The fence height shouldn't have anything to do with that. But I, I mean, I understand what you're saying. I'm just saying this is the type of thing, that there are very strict legal laws, and the law is very settled on this. And I just wanted to point it out to you.
Elder Person Rayo, did you have a follow-up?
So Sue, are you saying that you are going to appeal, or were you looking for direction here?
Well, I wouldn't, yeah, I would need your approval to do that, and we would have to do that at a meeting. I mean, it's not really on the agenda right now, so.
Right, okay.
Thank you. Further requests to speak? Seeing none, we've got a motion and a second. Please cast your ballots.
Motion carried, six ayes, one nay.
Okay. Item 14, referral communication to committees. The clerk sent an email out to Elder Person's last week, which day, not sure which day, requesting that referrals for her benefit and for the record get submitted in written format. So I guess, did you have any referrals to read?
I only have one, and it's from you. So if you'd like to read it, that'd be great.
All right. Since you probably don't want to read my handwriting. The referral that I'm submitting, and this just comes as a result, we didn't make a full comment about it, but with the vacancy on the city council, as the public is seeing it tonight, and all of us now having received word yesterday, I've received at least three contacts in the last 24 hours asking what the city's going to do. And so I had said that I would refer it to the body for their consideration, and that's just discuss filling the Aldermanic District 2 following the resignation by Lee Graff of the position. So I'll give that to the clerk, and I understand that has to go to the body. I think Attorney Shill can provide guidance to the council about what the options are and that sort of thing. I guess there are other requests to speak. Elder Person Blazer, we'll go to you.
Well, I guess since we're the governing body and we didn't agree to the referral procedure, however, I was going to reiterate just what you had spoken about. If I recall, Sue, it's up to the mayor to decide to fill the vacancy, at least for now and then, or is it up to the, I wasn't sure what the procedure was?
Right. It's all of council, and you can decide to, if you, you know, when you decide you want to fill it, then that person can either be, can fill until a special election or until the expired term, which is going to be in the spring anyways. It's too, I mean, it's so late in the year that it probably makes sense not to, if you do a special election, it's going to have to be probably in mid-November, December anyways. It'll be a standalone election, so there'll be some expense there. So the person you appoint will, you know, can be in the seat until the election in April, or, like I said, you could have a special election, but then that would require, it'd have to be at least 65 days from the time you order it, and, you know, you'll have to come up with timelines and everything from now and any papers and such. And then you'd have to have another election anyways in April, so.
I don't think, is that, that term doesn't expire in April, does it?
It does. It does, yeah.
He would be, yeah, correct.
Okay.
Okay. No, I'm not advocating for a special election, that's for sure.
Right. So we'll put that on the next council agenda, then, on how you want to.
Perfect. Unless a special council meeting is necessary, and I don't know if there's any items out there for that.
I mean, I guess you'd need to think about, you know, how you want to do that. If in September you decide, okay, well, we're going to ask for people to submit, you know, then obviously, then that's going to put it off another month. But I guess just think about those things of how you want to obtain, you know, interested candidates, or however you want to do it. I guess it's really up to you, because there aren't any rules on it.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Attorney, yep.
May I address the referral issue? The only reason I'm asking for referrals in writing is it makes it easier for me to record them. Also, when they're, when we just speak them out at the end, sometimes I don't capture what that referral item is. So it's just more of a record-keeping thing than a procedure that you have to follow. I'm just requesting that you put it in writing so that I have a good record of it and I can understand what the referral is.
Sounds good. I'm just glad the meetings are taped.
Well, and to that, sometimes, if you don't have your mic on, I can't hear what you're saying, and if the camera isn't on you, I don't know who made the referral, I can't hear what the referral is, so that's why I made that request.
Okay. If I know ahead of time, I'll submit a minute.
Okay, thanks.
Elder Person Coth.
I just, for Elder Person Kellogg's benefit and the viewing public, want to acknowledge that tonight I received two referrals from him for the Property and Finance Committee meeting. One is for replace and install Wisconsin Rapids welcome signs, and the other one is to review the implementation of the new police body cameras. And I have those referrals for our next Property and Finance Committee meeting.
Elder Person Kubashak, you're next.
Much like Mr. Coth here, I want to acknowledge that I received a referral from Mr. Kellogg about the intersection of Chestnut Street and A Street. So I'll have that on the next agenda, if you want to speak to that right now, or if that's just fine, that I'm acknowledging it and it's going to be on the agenda.
Thank you. So you acknowledged the referral, the nature of the referral, so technically it's not on the agenda unless you want to...
Well, I like, I wouldn't mind speaking. The intersection of Chestnut and Eighth Street is a serious problem. To make a right turn off of Chestnut on the Eighth Street, it's almost like a 45-degree angle, and it's really difficult. Now we're going to have the Aquatic Center. We're going to have more traffic, more pedestrians, and I think we need to revisit that intersection. I put down, they asked on their proposal what options. Maybe the northbound on Eighth Street, maybe the straight going north can be narrowed, that lane, and the center be narrowed so that the left straight would be able, you can make a turn there. Or maybe the light fixtures, or maybe you have to change the southwest corner, making it a 30-degree rather than a 45 or something like that, or 60-degree. It just seems to me, anybody making a right turn there, I've heard from the community, and I, I'm speaking personally, it's an accident ready to happen. And with the Aquatic Center, it's absolute, in my opinion, so.
Elder Person Kellogg, you've got, was that you were speaking to that item? Okay. Are there any further requests to speak? Seeing none, item 15, I entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion by Zerflu, is there a second? Second by Blazer, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, stand adjourned. Thank you all for being here and have a good rest of your evening.